I am not sure that in my time sitting on council that there has been as many really heated discussions. Usually, appointing people to commissions prior to the last like two years has been a rather boring situation. Sometimes, there has historically been times way in the past when we were asking and telling people, hey, you should apply for this commission because we really could use someone who, you know, sat on planning because, especially in planning, because you're reading a lot of documents and it is not quite as much fun as when you get to sit on community services and you get to discuss things like parks and trails and kids and things that our community really loves. I was asked this week whether or not my opposition to these appointments had to do with that I was mayor during the time that Erin and Brandy were appointed. And I actually hadn't even come into my thought or into my brain. The reason why it is that I'm opposed to these appointments purely has to actually do with some of the things that the speakers said. I think that a good, effective board who does a good job of planning what it will look like in 10 years, in 20 years, comes from when we have a variety of voices at the table. Some of those who I, in my regular life, disagree with on a regular basis. But when we operate in a silo, we only hear our own voices and we hear the things that we want to hear, rather than someone else giving us a different perspective. And I think that as our job, it is our job as members of the council to make sure that when we appoint people to commissions that, one, they're good human beings and that they care about our community, which I think that all of these people fill that box. But also that they represent the balance of our community so that everybody's voice can be heard. Because ultimately, they don't have, commissions don't have voting power. They make recommendations. And the five of us up here get to say thumbs up, thumbs down most of the time to their recommendations. But it is really important, in my opinion, that there is a balance of voices at the table. And because of that, I will not be voting to support these appointments.
Is that it? Councilmember Danuka? You were on the list.
So, in my opinion, whenever there is a controversial issue, we need to go back to our basic values and principles. So it's not about who do we appoint. The question is, why do we appoint someone or not other? And how do we appoint? So why and how are more important than who. And we need to decide based on not, this is Joshua Johnson or Erin Hatch or Brandy Green or Blake. What we need to decide is why we are appointing. The primary interest is, what is good for the city? What's good for our city? And that requires some experience, which two terms can bring, which Brandy and Erin have, the second term. That experience can be valuable. Also, the diversity of background and opinion and perspective, even if we may or may not agree with that, is valuable. But right now, we have even more important value is uniting our community. We need to heal the fractures in our community rather than increase them, which has happened over the last few years. And that was further worsened what happened during the Erin Hatch attempted removal from the position. In order for those three things, I would recommend that we continue those two who have already served and have expressed a desire of serving. Furthermore, I would also ask you to consider the fairness in this process. The golden rule applies here. How would we want to be treated? Short of a serious misconduct, we need to respect somebody who wants to continue for a second term, rather than unceremoniously showing them the door. So for that reason, I would suggest, I would urge Honorable Mayor, a mayor, to reconsider his appointments and reconsider those two who have expressed interest to continue serving for two more, for one more term each. And to the new applicants, I would say that you are great people. I have met some of them. Actually, I do not even know the current commissioners very well. You're great people and I would love to appoint you in the future. But for the sake of healing our community and the reasons I stated, I would recommend and appeal to the mayor to reconsider his decision.
Thank you. You want to go?
Mike.
Vice Mayor Lata.
I came here with an open mind, but because we don't get a chance to really talk at all, before coming to council, I was really interested just to hear your thoughts as far as what went into the thoughts of the appointments. And that was definitely going to help me, so I'd like to hear from you.
Yep.
So I'm not going to relitigate the whole thing. I don't know, obviously, I know Josh. And I know, I don't know Blake. I read through his bio. I don't have any issue with either of your picks. I don't know Blake. But I can tell why you picked him. I could see his background and things that, I think, values that you have and that are reflective in your pick. I can just tell you that when I was the mayor and picking, because that's really what this is. Each mayor is going to pick. You pick your own diversity of people. You'll pick your own diversity of people. Erin will pick her people. And nobody, in the past, I've watched, I went back and watched many of these, nobody objects because it is the prerogative of the mayor. So the, this whole, I think insanely disrespectful, trying to grab it and make it this big issue. You can watch time after time, people do four years and then another group comes in. It happens almost every single time. Very rarely do you have somebody do a back-to-back. Not because there's anything wrong with the people that are finishing up. It's because you, when you're elected and when this group decides you're going to come in, then you're picking based on what your values are and what you believe is important, which obviously the constituents care about because they voted for you. And so obviously, they trust your judgment. And these are volunteer positions. It's a four-year gig. You go, you go there to learn. We're all up here without experience being city council members and we're expected to come in and to learn. And the more people that actually go on committees, more people that get onto Planning Commission, it actually just makes the entire process stronger. It makes the city stronger. It's a totally different look when you have different people coming. The continuity of that group is five people stay, two people are switching out every two years. And this has worked this way for forever. And so the idea that we're going to heal because we keep somebody, even though nobody else keeps the previous people, this actually turns over year upon year. No insult to the people that have volunteered. I think it's an amazing opportunity. We constantly at Leadership Writing and in many different ways have asked our Rotary friends, we ask our Leadership Writing friends. I'm sure in all of those Citizen Academies, we're telling people, just get more involved, learn the process, come and be a part of this. If you care about growth in the city or you don't want things to grow too much in the city, get involved in the Planning Commission, learn things. And so I can see, obviously, we know Josh Johnson has, deeply wants to affect what our city looks like, wants to serve and serves in many capacities. So the strengths that he brings, that's obvious. This new person who I don't know, I don't know Blake, but I think it's amazing that you've found somebody that actually wants to serve and be a part of it. And I actually think what brings healing is that we don't disrupt and interrupt and say, no, you have to do it this way because these are our friends and because we want them to serve again another four years. It's the mayor's decision. And I think it's incredibly disruptive. He doesn't actually have to take our advice on this one. We just have to say, are they serial killers? Are they going to come and destroy the city? No, okay, great. Thank you so much for doing the work to find them. I don't think there has to be anything negative to the people that are done. And I think it's a super disservice to them to act as such. They served, they gave their time. It's a lot of time. They saw, I've seen great growth over the last four years. So I thank you for everybody that's on the Planning Commission that has served because I think we've grown smart. I think we've done some great things as the projects that have been approved. And I think there's more to come. So thank you for finding them. And I will obviously approve.
Thank you. Councilmember Danuka?
I will let you speak after that.
I'll speak last.
Well, with all due respect, Ms. Ardet, you used certain words which were, I will just take those in stride, like insane and disrespectful, I'll just take this in stride. So I'll just be, thank you for your opinions. Having said that, I want to clarify that I mean no disrespect to the Honorable Mayor. I respect him completely. I'm just expressing my opinion on, because as I said earlier, the question is not who, the question is how we do it.
This is how we do it.
May I? So what we do here reflects not just on our decision-making, but how we carry ourselves, are we listening to our constituents? How are we treating each other on the dais? What the culture we set is the culture which becomes the culture of our city. And it's imperative on us to carry each other with that grace. And that's the process I'm talking about. Had there not been an issue which became so controversial and fracturing our community last year, that one of the commissioners was forced to defend himself when he was just short by few months finishing his term. Had that not been the case, my opinion would have been probably different and I would have completely deferred without speaking a word. But having seen that, it's very important for us to heal this culture. Just because we can do something doesn't mean that we should be doing it. And that's why I want to make sure that we set that culture. And that's why it means there's no disrespect to the mayor. It just, I'm trying to set a new system, new culture of process here.
Well, I will just respond, I'll just respond.
I'm just saying thank you.
Yeah.
So now you can say.
I will respond to that and say that the fact is, is that last year, there was nothing but disrespect on this council. With every process that was happening, there was a disruption to that and disrespect to the process. And to me, this is a continuance of that. And if you want to heal it, then we're going to need to respect the process. And the process is, is that the mayor gets to decide. And just the same way that Brandy and Erin came on and took two people off, they actually replaced people that also wanted to continue.
That's not true.
Erin didn't replace somebody that wanted to continue?
No, you just said the two of them replaced someone who wanted to continue.
I misspoke. Erin did. Brandy replaced somebody that had to leave. The point is, is that for me, everybody, no matter what it comes through, they all want to continue and they all replace somebody that would have been happy to continue. So that actually is the process. And this is not the process. This is actually a totally different way of doing things and to challenge the mayor, which started last year and it's continuing. And this grand conspiracy that Bethel has anything to do with what we do up here just continues on. And when you have the commenters saying that, so to honor this faction of, oh, we're, I would love for him to vote with me all the time and you all are up here and you know that that does not happen. You know that that does not happen. And so the fact is, is that there, that this process is that the mayor decides. And if we have an objection because there's something wrong with a candidate, we owe it to the community to raise that objection. But when there isn't an issue with the next candidate, it's just respectful to pick, to let the mayor decide. And so this is nothing, everything that you're saying, I agree with. Everything. But I don't, but what I disagree with is the fact that this, what you're doing, is a disruption to actually how it works.
Councilmember Resner.
I didn't, I just, I didn't tell him who it is that he has, who the mayor has to choose. I merely said, what really I don't think is a wise idea is to have six members of a commission who all work and financially benefit from one specific industry because I don't think that that one industry makes up the balance of our community. Also, to be completely honest, and this doesn't routinely matter to me because I do not care where it is that somebody attends church. Joshua Johnson is the first person whom Mayor Muntz has put forward who hasn't had something like pastor in their bio. Mr. Nance does not have that. But I am shocked and I would love to push you on whether or not you have ever met Mr. Nance.
I have no idea who Mr. Nance, if he walked in here right now, I wouldn't even know who he is. Are you serious?
Also, did you not publicly?
Are you seriously saying?
Did you not publicly say last year that during the Erin Hatch situation, which by the way, I, just for clarity and for the record, I did not say who it is that the mayor has to pick and that my issue is the balance. But did you not publicly say, because there are multiple members, I believe, in the audience as well as here, that Erin Hatch, if you had your way, would never sit on Planning Commission ever again?
No, I never said that. I didn't have to say that. The question, the question that was at hand last year was the comments that he said. And I said, I think that there should be a response to that and there should be something that we do. No, I never said that.
Oh.
Not only did I not say that I've never met, I have no idea who this guy Blake is, I've never met him.
Councilmember Danuka?
Oh, with all due respect, Councilmember Ardet, you have said that to me personally, that Erin Hatch would never sit on the...
I've never talked to you about Erin Hatch.
Okay, that's all right.
I have never talked to you about Erin Hatch.
That's all right, that's okay, that's fine, sorry.
Where were we? When did that happen?
That's fine, that's fine.
When did that ever happen, Hall?
I suggest, with all due respect, maybe you do not remember it. That is fine and is completely all right. But I'll move on from there. So I just want to, I just want to say again that I am very sorry for what has been happening last few years, particularly, let's be frank about it, talking about a specific church. That should not have happened. And I would encourage the public speakers to actually not target or point fingers at any particular person or any particular church. I go to a different church, but there are wonderful people in every church and I would encourage people not to go after any single church. And on behalf of all the people, I am sincerely sorry to see that happen over the last few years with you. And you should not be facing that. And I would, I would definitely, if someone does that, I would discourage that. And I will stand with you on that. Having said that, just last thing I want to say and I will settle my case is, again, it's just my suggestion to the mayor with full respect. I also have a suggestion, which I have already said, that if those two current nominees withdraw their nomination in good faith, I will be happy to appoint them when I am in the mayor position.
Mayor Proten?
I'm fine.
Okay. All right, here we go. Josh Johnson, I didn't consider that he was a developer much. I considered that he had, I mean, we had four or five months with him on the council. He asked very good questions. He was very interested in what we were doing. He dug in.
He sat here, that's why you're pointing in this direction.
He dug into, into things very deep. He didn't just take things at a surface level. And I so appreciated all the questions that he asked, all the things that he did while he was up here. And he sat on the Planning Commission. He knows what it takes. He's been there, he's done it, and he did a good job. So that's that. I think he's very well qualified. Erin, I've met with Erin, I like Erin. I never met with Brandy. She seems like a very nice person. But this position is an open position. There is no rhyme or reason that they need to be reappointed again. And I selected Blake. Blake is, I don't know, he's, he's one of a kind, in my opinion. He, he is clients, he has, you know, Dick Clark. He does all the productions for Dick Clark. Massive productions, massive planning that take months. These aren't just weeks or days, they're months to plan out. One of the things he does is, does permitting and roads, roads development. One of the things we're worried about in the Peaks subdivision is where are access roads? He has experience with these access roads, developed them, worked through them. He has massive experience. He's seen the successes of planning and he was, if you read his bio, he was in, have you ever seen the movie Black Hawk Down? He was there. He was on the roof of the embassy. He was a sniper and was defending our country. And he saw the failures of planning. How does, how does this army that's ragtag take on the Delta Force and beat them up? And he saw the failures. He knows, he understands planning. He has a master's degree in policy. I think he's a great person. I have nothing against Erin. I like Erin and I don't know Brandy. I talked to her very briefly, she was very nice. But I am solidly in the corner of Josh Johnson and Blake Nance and I am recommending to nominate him today. So, Vice Mayor Lata.
Thank you for answering those questions. It's definitely uncomfortable. Just look at the circumstances. This is a very important commission. They make very important decisions that help shape the future of Reading. So I don't take this commission very lightly. I think about the perspective of diversity on the commission as far as how decisions get made. We need the influence of people from all perspectives. And one thing we heard earlier is, are we listening to our constituents? And that is important to me. We've heard from a lot of people. We've heard from speakers today. We heard from people that supported Mr. Hatch last summer as well overwhelmingly. And there were many more people that came last year. So all that stuff comes into factor. The thing I'm uncomfortable with, I don't like, I don't like my vote feeling the perspective of a very political nature, which means what happened last summer still feels very fresh. And it's very customary to approve everything what the mayor would bring to the table. I mean, that, these should be really, really easy decisions for us. And I would think in the future, if I ever become the mayor and I, I have people I would like to nominate, I would think that would be very customary and I would do my due diligence, my research. And the names I put forward would be, would be very good people to serve. I look at the people that you've nominated, I have no disrespect for them. I think Josh Johnson would be a great person. I've talked to him a lot. He has great perspective, he asks good questions. He reads all the papers. He's very well-prepared. The other person that you've nominated brings another form of diversity again. He's not a realer, not a developer. So, you know, there's a lot of merit to the other name that you've proposed there. We have very important issues coming this summer with the Riverfront project, the Peaks development. Some of the stuff our current commission has been working on very hard over the past. And I also think about veteran leadership with the upcoming items this summer. As we want to make good decisions. And having good veteran leadership, good veterans that can serve on that commission, to me, is also really, really important. But in the end, I like all the options. I think we've got good people. And again, this is, this is the mayor's choice that we really want to support. But I don't want my vote to be political in nature. I would offer an idea, a counter, and just see if you would consider this. As I just think through everything, I want to respect the constituents, what the people in Reading are telling us. I want to be able to honor yours as well. But I want to ask to see if you might consider picking one of your appointments and allowing one of the former commissioners to continue. And maybe we would be able to find consensus within the council here and the constituents to find common ground. Maybe that would be a good compromise to, to give good diversity to the commission for the future. And maybe that's an option we would give. But I'm swaying to vote no on this. But I do want to respect the constituents, I want to respect the process, I want to respect, you know, everything that you put thought. But I don't want my vote to be political.
Well, let's, let's talk just briefly about last time. We got, they talked about, we got about 25 emails. I mean, you read them. Last time, we got well over 100. So it was massive back then. It's drastically reduced now. Last time, we had, I don't know how many, 30, 40, 50 speakers? We have five. So things have greatly reduced. This is not a plan where they have to, and I'm not going to resend my picks. These are the guys I think are well-qualified. Just about every commissioner who comes on replaces somebody. And Erin had no experience in planning when he came on. I think Brandy had a little bit, is what I'm told. And that's the nature of the business. The two that I have appointed have experience in planning. So what the constituents want, are we going to vote because we have 25 people? Or I could go out easily, find, you know, 2,000 or 3,000 to support them, or more. So are we going to let 25 people make our choice for us? So I think it's, it's not nearly what it was before. And I voted to keep Erin last time. But this time, it's different. And I, I think these other guys are very well-qualified and I'm standing up for them.
Yeah, and just to add to that again, I just want to reiterate, I think the two that you nominated are very well-qualified. And I think the two prior Planning Commissioners are very well-qualified as well. So we do have excellent options. But again, it just feels very political in nature to do it on this timing and I'm uncomfortable with that.
Well, I'm not, I'm not going to digress. All right. Well, we are going to call for a vote. Okay.
I'll make a motion as you have requested.
I'll second. And now we can vote. I'm voting yes. Is that what you want to know? Okay, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, oppose, oppose?
I'll abstain.
Okay. So we tie. What does that mean?
Yeah, that means there's no action.
Okay.
So you'll have two vacancies?
Yes.
Yeah, so we'll work with the mayor and presumably, there'll be two additional appointments recommended to the council at the next meeting.
Can we go person by person?
In terms of what the vote was?
Yeah.
Are, are you asking for a roll call vote? Or are you asking, attack votes on individual appointees?
On individuals.
You could make a motion to that effect.
I'll make a motion that we go person by person. We'll start with Josh, vote for him. And then we'll start again for Blake and vote for him.
I would suggest making those as two separate motions.
Yes, yes, correct. Okay. All right. Do we need to nominate or we just vote on them?
No, you need to motion and second for each.
Okay.
Okay, I'll make a motion for Josh Johnson to be on the planning.
Okay.
To approve your selection of Josh Johnson for the Planning Commission.
All right, I will second it. Can we say, all in favor of that one? Aye. Oh, wait a minute.
Can we, can we, can I ask a question? Before we vote, what's the purpose of this? I mean, we're...
We're voting in both off or we're voting just one off? Or...
I think the perspective over you're hearing is we're, we're uncomfortable with both of your choices as a whole, at least from my perspective. I would be comfortable with one, but I would rather come back to the next council meeting with another set of recommendations, whether it be Josh and, you know, a former commissioner. And that'd be my preference. So I would be inclined to vote no. If we're going to do a vote on both of them, I'll be not voting in support.
If they don't approve the decision.
You don't get a choice.
Yeah.
Just as far as order of operations, there's a motion and a second and there was a call for vote. So I'd recommend all the council members vote.
Now am I doing this thing?
So for a point of, for a point of clarity, if, if we don't agree, they just stay, there's just a vacancy on the...
That's correct.
Yeah, until we get to the next one, yeah.
Yeah, they don't stay.
Do I have...
Just so we can finish this one, there's, you still need to vote, Vice Chair Lata.
But before we do that, I want to make an alternate motion.
Well, you already made that. The motion has already been made.
That one's done.
And that one's finished. So now you may make another motion, if you wish.
Okay. So this one is final, right? This is a tie. Sorry. I will make a motion to request.
Nominate or not nominate, that's all you get to choose.
No, I can make a motion, I want. And it can be seconded or not.
You cannot make a motion.
Why can he not make a motion?
Only, the only motion we vote for is for...
We are...
That's already done. That's already done.
Well, Paul's, or Josh's, John, now we're making a motion for Blake.
That's fine, we can go ahead. You can carry on with that.
Make the motion to approve Blake.
All right, I second it. Now we vote on that one.
Can you please verbalize?
Okay, yeah. I vote yes, all in favor? All in favor?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Yeah. All of them in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hit, hit abstain.
Okay. All right, there we go. All right, now what?
That would be so much more fun, oh, they are putting it up there.
Yeah. Clearly, we have reached an impasse. My motion is to request the mayor to come up with other nominations for the future consideration.
Well, it's already going to happen, yeah. You don't need to nominate.
Right, but I would, I'm just making a motion, that we ask, request the mayor to reappoint Erin Hatch and Brandy Green.
I'll take that under consideration.
So that's my motion, and I just want to see if any, I have a second.
No.
It doesn't work.
Doesn't matter, it didn't work that way. You don't get to make a motion for that.
It's his appointment.
I get the appointment.
I know it's your appointment. I'm just asking about my motion to...
Make that motion.
My recommendation, would you, you can just request that the mayor bring back those individuals, since the ordinance is very explicit that it's the mayor's appointments and council ratification.
Absolutely. Absolutely. I'm just saying that I'm asking the mayor to reappoint those two people.
Correct.
And I just want to know if...
I'm not going to tell you what I'm going to do.
No, 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 you don't have to. You don't have to challenge me. You don't have to honor it.
I'm replying to the same two people.
That is absolutely fine. That's absolutely fine. I'm just asking that if I make that motion, would I have a support of any other council member?
It doesn't matter.
It doesn't work that way.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, I think what's being asked for is effectively a straw poll of the council. Within your discretion, you could request that each of the members indicate their position.
It doesn't...